All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start. Unfortunately, my mom needs a handicap spot, and they're hunting for a handicap spot. So in the meantime, we will go ahead and get started. So if she moseys herself in, she might make a little noise. So I apologize for that. So good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are here for our regular council meeting. Actually, I considered it a very special council meeting of December 4th, 2018. Can we get roll call, please? Mayor Dibbal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
My last present.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Here.
Great, thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Chaplain Robert Pichetti. And our post of colors tonight will be by the Uba City Police Honor Guard. And our pledge of allegiance will be held by Christopher Murphy.
As I sat back there tonight, I just began to think, why don't we just keep everybody? Why just have a bigger city council, two mayors? I mean, let's be different, right? And at the same time, I began to think, God said he will bless our coming in and our going out. So that's the prayer I'd like to pray tonight. A prayer of blessing on our city, a prayer of blessing on our government, those going out that God would bless where they go and what they do. And the ones coming in, he'd bless them with wisdom. So Father, right now, I come before you, and I ask for individual blessings for each council member, that God, that you would bless them with a wisdom beyond their understanding, a knowledge, a quickening of their spirit, that God, they would just know things. And that Lord, that you would protect and guide, that you would cover this city with your purpose and your intent, that your love would just be extended throughout the city. And in this way, I pray, amen.
You may be seated. All right. First of all, I just want to welcome our new city attorney, Shannon. Welcome. Next, we have our public communications. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda, which when they are called, public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. So do we have any written requests at this time?
None received.
Okay. And anybody from the audience that would like to speak? Nope. Just going to give a few minutes as my mother walks in now. Great. Thank you, Rob. So tonight, since no one wants to speak at this time, we'll go ahead and go business for city council. Sutter Butte Flood Control Executive Mike will be presenting to Councilmember John Buckland and Stan Cleveland at this time. You want to find a way up to the podium?
Thank you, members of the council. And again, my name is Mike Inamina. I'm the executive director of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. On behalf of the agency Board of Directors and staff of the agency, I want to thank John and Stan for their tremendous service over these past several years. I've had the pleasure of working for you. John, I have learned so much about local government from you. You have been that politician who has never allowed politics get away of doing the right thing. For that, I thank you. Stan, I've known you, you may not know this, but I've known you for quite a long time. Actually, before I served with the agency seven years ago. You've been always just the stalwart champion for strong flood control in the region and elsewhere throughout the Central Valley. Your guidance and leadership has contributed to many of our successes at the agency. So thank you, Stan. So on behalf of the agency, thanks so much, John Buckland, Stan Cleveland. I have no doubt that you will continue to serve, and I look forward to serving with you in whatever capacity our paths may cross. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And so we have a couple of farewell presentations tonight. So I will be presenting to Councilmember Buckland as well as Councilmember Cleveland. All right, John. You know the routine, right?
Yeah, I think so. We might have done this once or twice.
Once or twice, right? Okay. I'm going to hand you these as I read off of this. So John Buckland retired in 2010 from the Uba City Police Department after 31 years, immediately elected to city council, where he further dedicated himself to the community honorably and with great distinction. John served as the Uba City Council member from 2010 through to night, 2018, and served as mayor twice. Examples of John's focus for Uba City include: Public safety, ensured strong and well-staffed fire and police departments by approving grants and new hiring strategies, approved the expansion of police department facility, purchased new fire vehicles and fire safety equipment as a longtime member of the Board of Directors of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, just like Mike had just presented. John has worked to ensure that our levees are safe and secure. Infrastructure. John represented the city of Uba City on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for the last eight years. That consistency was really important to us. Through the leadership and the advocacy, Uba City was able to secure $71 million in grant funding for the Fifth Street Bridge construction project. Physical stability. The city and nation were still feeling the effects of the Great Recession in 2010, when John became a council member. Through the city's council, with the finance leadership and positive guidance, along with concessions by city employees, Uba City was able to withstand the Great Recession, upholding all of our finance stability, maintaining critical services and public facilities through some very challenging financial times. As a council member, John received many complaints over the years about our youth not having enough to do in Uba City. So he put his money where his mouth is by investing in the community and opening the Millennium Kart Racing Event Center, thereby providing additional recreation and social amenities within the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Preet Dibbal, Mayor of the City of Uba City, do hereby commend the Honorable Mr. John Buckland for his commitment and outstanding performance as a council member and mayor of the City of Uba City. I hereby urge that our residents join us in recognizing John for his countless contributions to our community and wish him all the best in the future.
Thank you.
That's beyond awesome. But I have a few words if you all would just indulge me. I'm going to go back and sit down. It's only about 15 words, but I'd rather speak them from that microphone, if I may do some air. All right. So it's a few more than 15 words?
Yes.
It's been my distinct honor to serve the citizens of Uba City for the past 39 years. 31 years in the police department, eight years on the City of Uba City Council. When I arrived on the council, the city was in deficit spending, and employees were on 10% furloughs. Things didn't get immediately better as we continued to experience revenue declines for the next six quarters. This recession caused a number of cities in California to reach insolvent positions. Uba City staff across the board led the charge to reverse the trend. Spending was slashed. Economic development began to emerge, helping to elevate revenues along the city to achieve a balanced budget by 2015. This included the establishment of a 16% reserve fund. And by 2017, the city emerged from 10 years of economic challenges to a surplus budget. This was made possible by the policy of this council and the excellent, and I mean excellent, performance of the staff and leadership by Mr. Steven Krager. My service on the council incorporates 214 regular council meetings and special workshops. In addition, I served on various boards and commissions, attending 356 meetings. Those were for the Regional Waste Management Authority, Uba Sutter Transit Authority, Uba Sutter Homeless Consortium, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, Sutter Animal Services Authority, Uba City Unified Schools Liaison, Uba City Redevelopment Board, Uba City Redevelopment Oversight Committee, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, which included the SACOG Government Relations and Public Affairs Committee, SACOG Executive Board, the SACOG Shared Services Board, the SACOG Representative on the California Council of Governments, and as a local government liaison. These 570 meetings consumed nearly 4,000 hours. Serving twice as mayor, I'm especially proud of two significant achievements. The first is the Sutter Animal Services Authority and the construction of a state-of-art facility. This project languished for years, uncertain of its future. This project advanced with sheer determination and skillful negotiations to provide programs and to care for our furry friends. Second is bringing to an end a prolonged teacher's strike. I brought the two sides together on day three of a strike to produce the framework for a final resolution to end that strike. This contract is still in place today. Meetings with various citizens and groups were the highlight of my time on the council. I had 1,543 meetings, mostly one-on-one, to discuss topics ranging from alcohol beverage control to our wastewater treatment plant. I enjoyed the 1,375 hours, listening to the perspectives presented, incorporating much of the content into my thought process. Representing the city of Uba City on the national and international stage on topics such as agricultural production, value-added egg products, community enhancement projects, public safety, levy projects, transportation, and cultural enrichment with our Toray-Japan sister-city relationship will continue to improve the quality of life in Uba City. Uba City is part of a larger community. Attending various parades, cultural celebrations, and dinners as a representative of the city certainly ranks high on my list, merging fun with accomplishments together. Activities on the council consumed in excess of 9,860 hours that I consider to be a community investment. This time was made possible with the support of my wife, Tricia, my daughters Lauren and Nikki, and my son, Nathan. And I don't believe it would have been as easy without the support of our friends. Investment of time paves a path of continuity of projects, much like the Twin Cities Memorial Bridge Replacement Project that started as a community vision carried by our mayor, Bob Barkhouse, who's in the very back row. Many years ago, he had the vision. Funding for the construction through SACOG came through this council and continues today and will complete in the year 2020. Many projects lay in front of us. The federal levy work south of town for the safety of the southern parts of our city. The Bridge Street Corridor Phases Four and Five, which brings promise of $40 million in new projects to include a new downtown hotel. The Marriott Hotel Project at 99 and 20. The 99 and 20 interchange project that was advanced by this council with planning. The homeless housing at 1965 Livock Boulevard. And our offer of assistance to the County of Sutter County to advance that project. Transitional housing complex that can be located in the south end of Uba City is certainly a possibility. And one of my greatest achievements following the Oroville crisis was the development of the Dynamic Catastrophic Evacuation Model that we have prepared through SACOG to use the robust systems at that location to power that model to allow for greater response and dynamic response during a crisis. I congratulate the incoming board for their desire to serve this city. I wish each member success in elevating Uba City and challenge them to collectively exceed the Milken benchmark of being the seventh-best-performing small city in America. As for my service to this great city and the Uba Sutter community, my contribution does not end tonight. And I want to thank each and every person in this community for allowing me to serve you now and into the future. Thank you.
Getting all sorts of Kleenexes and tissue. Hello, Stan. You know the routine as well, right? All right. And so Stan Cleveland Jr. was elected to city council in 2014 after previously serving for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors for eight years and served as Uba City Mayor from 2016 to 2017. Stan represented the city on many regional boards and committees, notably the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, as Mike had indicated, the Regional Water Authority, the Feather River Air Quality Management District, LAFCO, and the Uba Sutter Mosquito Vector District. Stan was appointed to the League of California Cities and Environmental Quality Community Board of Directors. The community works on water supply and the quality of water available, wastewater management and solid waste management. Example of Stan's focus for Uba City include: Infrastructure by ensuring our future generations have well-maintained, cost-effective water treatment and waste treatment facilities. Transportation corridors such as Highway 99 and Highway 20, Bridge Street widening and improvements, and the construction of the Fifth Street Bridge. Promoting economic development with the establishment of Uba Sutter Tourism District. Authorizing Uba City's five-year housing strategy. And Uba City being recognized as one of the Milken Institute top 10 best-performing cities in the nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Preet Dibbal, Mayor of the City of Uba City, do hereby commend the Honorable Stan, Mr. Stan Cleveland Jr. for his commitment and outstanding performance. As a council member and mayor of the City of Uba City, I hereby urge all of our residents to join us in recognizing Stan for his countless contributions to our community and wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
I'll stick with the script. I actually only have one small page. I actually know John quite, quite well. And I knew he would be very eloquent, and he would cover just about everything that I would have wanted to say. Many of the things that he was involved in, I was too. We had some of the same visions for infrastructure. We had some of the same ideas. It just happened to be for knowing what our community needed once we came out of the recession, the next steps to take. And I knew it, and we moved forward accordingly. And so we were able to accomplish a lot, working as a good team. So now I'll just go into my real comments here. They'll be brief. I sincerely thank the Uba City Administration and department heads for their patient indulgence into my out-of-the-box ideas and solutions. I can say many times, he looked at me like, where is he coming from? And they actually got somebody who's an engineering thinker come in there, Diana Langley, to help interpret what I was saying. That's the way engineer-type people are. They need interpretation sometimes. Steve, Terrell, Darren, Judy, and George, you were all great sounding boards for the ideas that I brought to you. You've made a great advantage for me. Terrell and Judy, for your efforts to keep me organized and on time, and that was difficult, to my meetings and assigned boards. Thank you so much. Wherever she's at. She's probably over on the other side. I don't know. And I want to thank Arnaldo, which is now in Madera, city manager, Robin, Brad, Diana, and to your staff for keeping me well-informed and educated on every conceivable issue in each of your departments. Many of them, people know that once I dive into something, I tear an issue apart, a subject apart, in every direction I can think of, and then try to put it back together in a way that'll be sustainable throughout the time of it would be discussed or moving forward. They did a great job in helping me with that. The past four years on the city council have been eventful, including the Oroville situation, and rewarding. As I move on to a private life, I know I leave the citizens of Uba City with a much more stable and prosperous city than when I took office in 2014. But the person I am most thankful for is my best friend and wife of almost 44 years, Becky. I was going to walk down and hand her the, then, but you know. Tell you, you have to have a best friend in life to really be successful. And she has definitely made that possible for me. Her patience and understanding of what I needed to do to best serve the citizens of Uba City has been remarkable. As I leave the council, my only desire is that Uba City continue to be the beacon of prosperity. It has become the past few years in this region. So thank you again for the opportunity to have been of service to you all, not just in Uba City, but Sutter County, the last 12 years. Thank you.
I guess it's a farewell to me now.
You see that? You didn't see that? All right, good. All right. Come on over here, Preet. Preet's turn. Mayor Dibbal. How's it feel, one last time? Go by that title? You get your chance. Proclamation here for, yeah, for Preet as your mayor for last year. It's my pleasure to read this for her. And excuse me, half a second. All right. Preet Dibbal was elected in 2014 and served as mayor of Uba City in 2017 through 2018, thus becoming the first sick woman to serve as mayor in the United States. Previously, she served on the Uba City and Sutter County Planning Commissions and the Sutter County Children and Families Commission. Preet's priority focus for Uba City has been clear. It's our children. The community needs to continue to be livable, healthy, and strong for future generations. In furtherance of her priorities, Preet held several community forums covering topics such as bullying, vaping, illegal drug use, and online predators. Preet was instrumental in bringing the successful Summer at City Hall program to Uba City for the last three years. If anybody's familiar with that, it's been wonderful for our community. Preet's accomplishments while serving as mayor of the City of Uba City are too many to list, but they do include adopting an abandoned shopping cart ordinance, purchasing 58 fire safety self-contained breathing apparatus, approving ADA upgrades to the senior center, adopting the public consumption and possession of alcohol ordinance, approving the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, approving the solid waste approving the solid waste recycling and organic material collection services contract, approved the police department facility expansing project, and hiring a new city attorney. Sitting right over there. Grants received during 2018 include $1.5 million for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. We call it the Safer Grant, which hired nine new limited-termed, for three years, full-time fire recruits, $800,000 for the development of the new Harder Parkway, $376,000 for the development of the urban forest management program, including planting 500 trees, $4 million to improve water distribution, customer service, and water loss prevention by installing new cellular read meters, and over $760,000 in grants for other public safety and infrastructure projects. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Vice Mayor of the City of Yuba City, do hereby commend and the Honorable Ms. Preet Dibbal for her commitment and outstanding performance as a council member and mayor of the City of Yuba City. I hereby urge all residents to join us in recognizing Preet for her countless contributions to our community and wish her all the best in the future. Also here, I'm not going to read it. We have a certificate of recognition from the California State Assembly and your gift, which of course, as tradition holds true. Let me turn around. You're gonna love this. This is nice. A custom gavel for her. So here you go. Oh, you want this?
I just, I have to make a comment on this because I just noticed it. It says men's gavel. Gender bias? It says men's gavel. Just had to make a point.
Well, we have a woman's framed print from our sister city in Japan. That's for you two.
Thank you so much.
I fixed it.
Oh, thank you. Before I go on, I think I have four pages, just FYI. Okay, embrace yourself. I have four pages. Okay. And I'll try. Yeah, there's another box down here. They do this to me every time. It has been an honor and privilege to serve as a mayor. And I'm already starting. Okay. This past year has been extraordinary for me. The last four years as a council member have been just absolutely amazing. I have been wanting to serve this community at a higher capacity and you allowed me to. So thank you. I can't believe how quickly the four years have flown by. They have been full of many afternoon meetings, evening meetings, events, hundreds if not thousands of pieces of paper to read and research. It's been great nighttime reading. So for new council members coming on board, get ready. You've got some good nighttime reading. But they are very necessary. They are must in order to make sure that we make sound and informed decisions for our entire community. I sat on many boards and commissions, Yuba City Unified School District Government Liaison, Yuba-Sutter Transit Board of Directors, Waste Management Authority, Sutter Animal Shelter Authority, Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO. But my greatest joy was meeting with so many people and learning from each other and better understanding the needs and the wants and the desires of our citizens. Through the years, I said I would focus on public safety, infrastructure, and our youth and families. So over these years, I've worked with our police chief and consolidated our peace officer hiring process into a single-day testing process. We are still working on building our new obstacle course as a part of this testing process that will be on our high school campus. And the reason I chose the high school campus is that it is a great way to be proactive and engage our youth in helping in the efforts to keep them clean, safe, and be productive members of our society, along with also introducing them to great future career opportunities. I've also championed the Summer at City Hall program, which is a three-week program for high school students who learn about how our city functions. They learn about local, state, and federal governments and they are introduced into civic engagement. They get to job shadow our city employees, our county employees. They work on a project that they present at a mock City Council meeting right here in the chambers, in front of a public audience. Fifty-six students have completed this program very successfully and have moved on and gone to college or are working on interns. So I'm very proud of them and will keep tabs on them and see how they're doing. The program is now entering its fourth year. I've also championed, as it was mentioned earlier, community health forums for the public to have an open discussion and introduction on issues that concern our communities, that concern our children or families on a daily basis. Topics such as vaping, drugs, whether they be on the streets or prescription drugs, marijuana, internet safety, cyberbullying, bullying, mental illness, suicide, were just some of the topics that were discussed during these forums. And recently, I began a project with the help of our Arts Council to begin the, to bring life back to our water tower. We are conducting a call to artists to paint the tower with artwork that embraces Yuba City. I look forward to the continued work with the Arts Council and see that this project continues to move forward as the tower is our focal point of our city, especially with our Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project and Bridge Widening, or Bridge Street Widening. Although these were just some of the projects I championed, none of these would be possible without the feedback and support of these council members. I appreciate each one of you. I appreciate the individual perspectives that you've had. Your input was important and ensured that we look at each project with different points of view and accounted for all potential, only to make each project that much better. Thank you. I also want to thank Terrell and Judy, who are always there and never missed a beat. I'm sure I drove you crazy at times. You can admit it. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Patricia, thank you for keeping us in line during these meetings. Steve and the executive team, that includes Brad, Rob, Pete, Diana, Robin, Darren, thank you. Each one of you have been truly dedicated to carrying out the policy direction by this council and have acted upon the interests and the concerns of our citizens. So thank you for all your work. And Steve, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for the excellence of your leadership. Our city staff, our employees, your work is not gone unnoticed. I've said this before and I'll say it again. This city does not function without you. Thank you for making the city what it is today. I want to also take a minute to thank all of our commissioners from our Parks and Rec Commission, our Youth Commission, our Senior Commission, our Economic Development Commission, our Personnel Board, and our Planning Commission. The work you do is an important job. It is an extension of achieving the goals and priorities set by our council every year. It was the reason that I helped move forward with the joint commission meeting so that each one of you not only get to know one another, but that you see how each one can collaborate on projects. I was a planning commissioner for 10 years, so I know the work that it takes. So I thank you for all the work and all the time and commitment that you've put into it. I want to also thank all my family and friends. Some of you are here today and those that are here today started with me way back in 2012, if not earlier. So thank you. Your unconditional love and support mean the world. I couldn't do any of this without you. We've been through a lot, lots of ups and downs. I can do this. So I want you to know, and some of you might not know this, but the first time I applied as a planning commissioner, I didn't make it. I did the second time. And then I became the liaison for the city as well as the county and the chairperson. And then I ran for office in 2012. I didn't make it. But I did the second time in 2014. And then I became the mayor. So never give up. Keep going. If it's your passion, if it's your dream and you know you can make an impact, don't let it stop you. None of this would be possible without you. All of you have supported me at one point or another and I thank you and I am forever grateful. Just take a deep breath, right? I was beyond surprised and excited and shocked as I made international history from Australia, London, India, Canada, just to name a few, to New York, DC, Los Angeles, and it keeps coming for becoming the first Sikh American woman to hold the highest office in an American city. Yuba City should be proud. And it has been an honor and a truly humbling moment. I am proud of Yuba City for stepping up and doing the right thing. I want to give special thanks to former mayors Ron Sutherd and Karen Carticelli and the Board of Supervisors Larry Munger. You, right from the beginning, have mentored me and have given me ongoing support to keep going. Thank you. To Carrie and DeeDee, our exciting campaign. Thank you so much for your support. And over these years, we have become friends. I will cherish that forever. Thank you. I'm sure you don't miss the 3 o'clock in the morning phone calls or text messages. We don't do phone calls. And to my daughter, who surprised me, as I said earlier, she wasn't supposed to be here because she's taking tests and midterms, but she apparently made arrangements a week ago. Thanks, Terrell and Judy, for not telling me. I love you, Menchkin, and I am so glad to see you sitting out there. See, I didn't have, I didn't have this in here to... So I put, "She is the reason." You are the reason all of this. You continue to inspire me and you have right from the beginning. Thank you. I love you. And to my mom, this woman is the epitome of strength and determination. See, she makes me cry every time. She never let me fall. And I fell many times. She picked me up. Because of the sacrifices that my mom and dad endured, I sit here today, living the American dream. I am because of you. I love you, Mom. Okay, she's crying too. She doesn't understand a thing I said. My niece is translating now. I am now stepping back from council. It's a bittersweet moment for me. As much as I wanted to keep furthering and doing more, probably go for another election, I'm taking this time to spend with my mom, who is struggling with dementia and a fracture in her lower back that is making it very typical for her to walk. It's been a true honor to serve you and our community. Yet today, I move to the highest honor and that is taking care of my mom. So at this time, I just want to congratulate our new mayor, our vice mayor, and our new council members. I congratulate you and I know you will do well. Thank you. We make our departure. So at this time, we'll go ahead and go over election results. Declaration of Election results are going to be presented by Patricia Buckland.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Yuba City General Municipal Election was held on November 6th, 2018 for three seats on the City Council. On November 28th, the Sutter County Register of Voters certified the results of the election. It is recommended that the council adopt a resolution declaring the three persons who receive the highest votes be elected. These are Mark Boomgarden with 7,659 votes, Dave Shaw with 7,498 votes, and Grace Espandola with 6,029 votes.
I'd move to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, we have our new council members. So we will go ahead and depart and we will administer the Oath of Office.
There you go.
Okay, we're going to be doing the Oath of Office in tonight. Would Mark Boomgarden like to come up? And with... And with his wife is going to be administering the Oath of Office to him.
Okay, Karen.
And Vice Mayor, if I could just chime in for the record, each one of the participants who will be administering the oath this evening have been temporarily deputized and are authorized to make that oath. Thank you.
First of all, I'm humbled and I'm honored that I have the opportunity to swear you in as the next member of this council. So with that, if you'll raise your right hand.
Trish, is it on?
And repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Mark Boomgarden.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
I gotta read this. Do solemnly swear... I didn't bring my glasses. That I will...
Support and defend...
Support and defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith to the...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution. You gotta do a little sound bites. I'm a little nervous.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well...
That I will well...
And faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which...
The duties upon which...
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter. Hoorah.
Come on up.
Welcome.
That's fine. How's it feel?
Up there? Okay.
I'm nervous. I'm used to being over there, not here.
Now I'd like to call up David Shaw and his wife Susan will be administering his Oath of Office.
Would you raise your right hand, please? I state your name.
Aye, David Shaw.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I...
Or affirm that I...
Will support and defend...
Will support and defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I have... That I bear and... That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will, that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
All right, and now it's my pleasure to call up Grace Espandola, and her father, Thomas Adams, is going to administer her oath. He has it in his pocket.
Yeah, it's in my pocket. I was going to read that one.
Okay, you want to read this one?
Sure.
Let's read this one.
Are you ready?
I don't know, we're figuring it out.
I state your name.
Aye, Grace Espandola.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
For affirm that I will support and defend...
That I will affirm and support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear, excuse me, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I will...
I will bear...
I will bear true faith and allegiance...
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United States of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
I will well faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon I'm about to enter.
Right.
We're done?
We're done.
All right, we have three new council members, and congratulations to all three of you. We have a one request for a written, uh, written request to speak from Rick, Mr. Jemerson. Are you here? Rick, are you out there? Rick got stage fright. He's not going to be here anymore. All right. It's gonna ruin my routine. Here he's coming. Don't wave at me, get in here.
I'm not waving, I'm just letting you know I have some hard feelings. Enjoying. Great job, Grace.
It's all good. Welcome.
Thank you. All respect here.
Good evening. Rick Jemerson, 2301 Gold Leaf Court, Yuba City. Congratulations, Mayor Harris, and council members, Mark, David, Grace. Great job. After hearing all the many accomplishments and the time spent by your former council members, I know that you have a daunting task ahead of you. And if you didn't realize it before, after hearing the hours and the committees, I'm sure it's starting to sink in right now, it's a big job, right? And I hope you find the value you're looking for as a member of the council to make it worth all you had to endure while running for office. Manny, I didn't mean to leave you out. You're like the junior on the team right now, you're gonna help lead that way. So I want to memorialize this effort to be sure the expectations of those that elected you are taken into considerations as you move forward. You do now have to put on your big boy pants. We elected you with the belief that you are a mature, responsible individual, ready to act in a professional manner. We hope you're able to enjoy many aspects of your new responsibility, including the sweet life. We simply ask that you do not partake with businesses or individuals with whom you may be involved in voting on in an ongoing negotiation. We expect that you not use your seat as a bully pulpit. We ask that you respect the rights and feelings of others and conduct yourself as professionals. We, the people, have three minutes under normal consideration to visit with you and to speak, and you have unlimited time. Consider your responses because they are memorialized as well. We respect that you have areas of expertise, yet you are not an expert on everything. Please, we ask that you remember that as well. Seek guidance from staff and the community. Do not fail our community by listening only to small percentage that agrees with you. Seriously examine all elements and listen to the community very closely, not just the people who surround you. When you promise that there will be transparency, when you promise that negotiations and decisions will not be made behind closed doors and in the dark, deliver on that process, on that promise. Do not hire consultants to handle your affairs and assure us that there is not transparency, and many months later, still no resolution or fact or details exposed to the public. Do not tell us we're receiving something free when our rates go up. Do not assure us that we can now increase our garbage because you have increased the size of the container. We've had that option all along. I personally don't plan on doubling my garbage, okay? Thirty new hires a year is a staggering number. We ask that you consider our ever-growing retirement deficit and take the steps other communities have taken to curtail it. We respect the fact that you want to provide services the city needs, yet how much government can we afford? Effective and efficient services should be the goal on an ongoing basis. A recent attempt to increase our sales tax was met with resistance, reflecting a lack of confidence in decisions made by council members and the staff. Keep in mind that if you do not listen to the people, they will rise up. They'll vote you out of office. They'll rise up, and you may become numbers five and six in an election where three candidates are seated. Sometimes, when everyone else seems to be out of step, it may be you. I encourage you to follow the positive patterns that have been set before you in the past by former council members, but also take into consideration some of the things that have happened that did not please people nor the community. Act at your best at all times. We expect no less. Congratulations once again, and thank you very much for taking the time to run and help support this city that needs people like yourself very dearly. Thank you.
All right, Rick, thank you very much for your comments. We're gonna move on to comments from our new council members, beginning with Councilmember Boomgarden. You're on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start this first by saying thank you to my mom. She couldn't make the trip up here tonight because she's had some recent surgery. I'm certain she will be able to view the video of this, so please indulge me as I thank her. My mom, a single parent, Marysville native, and middle school teacher in the Bay Area raised my sister and I. She made a lot of personal sacrifices during this time, but I would never have enjoyed some of the success in my life without her love, her patience, and her guidance. Thank you, Mom. I would also like to thank my immediate family for their support. In attendance tonight is my wife Karen and our three sons, Cameron, Kyle, and Michael. And like Preet's daughter, they rushed out of college to come here to be with us tonight. Thank you. They shared me, those three shared me with the city of Yuba City when I was a firefighter, and they are supportive of me as I return to city service on the city council. I especially want to thank Karen. The decision to run for council would not have been made without her unwavering support and wisdom. Thank you. I also have a special guest in attendance tonight that I would like to recognize and say, and thank. Some 39 years ago, in 1979, I moved here to attend Yuba College. Shortly after arriving here, I joined the Yuba City Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter. In the audience tonight is the Yuba City Fire Chief, who took a chance on me back then and allowed me the opportunity and privilege of serving the residents and guests of Yuba City. I would like to recognize and thank retired Yuba City Fire Chief William Burke at this time. Chief Burke?
Chief Burke has been there for me when I first joined as a volunteer, when I became a full-time firefighter, assisted in my badge-pinning ceremony as a Yuba City Fire Chief, and I'm so happy that he's able to join me here tonight for this ceremony. Thank you, Chief. There are many, many others who have supported, guided, and mentored me over the years, and during this campaign. My fear is that I would forget to mention one or more of those who have helped, so please know that I am so very thankful to all of you and will always look for the opportunity to thank you in person. I want to acknowledge and thank the past members and mayors of the Yuba City Council for their years of service to the city. This includes outgoing council, or they're all mayors, Buckland, Preet Dibbaugh, and Stanley Cleveland. Yuba City is in pretty darn good shape as a result of their leadership over the years, and as a resident of Yuba City and now a city council member, I'm very thankful for the wisdom, vision, courage, leadership, and guidance. Many of the important city projects that have recently been completed or are in the mid to final stages of completion were initiated and supported by city council over the years. Thank you to all of you. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank the voters of Yuba City for electing me to represent them for the next four years. I can't begin to tell you how humbling and encouraging it is to realize that a majority of those who voted have confidence in me to represent them. I take this responsibility very respectfully and seriously. You have my word that I will always be available to listen and make decisions that are the best enabled, that will best enable the city to be the best that it can be. To my fellow newly-elected council members, Grace Espandola and David. First, first, congratulations on being elected. As you know, it takes a tremendous amount of courage to choose to run, and even more so to go out and do the things that it takes to be elected. You have certainly earned my respect. With, we each have a lot to offer to each other, to the city, and to the city council as we join with our fellow council members. I'm looking forward to working alongside and with you over the next four years. To incoming, soon-to-be Mayor Harris and Vice Mayor Cardoza, first let me say thank you for your patience with my questions and the wisdom you shared during the campaign. I'm very aware that it takes more than one person or one vote to accomplish the work of the council, and I'm looking forward to your leadership and in joining with you as we lead the city in the coming years. To city staff, I'm looking forward to working with you and supporting your efforts in providing services to our citizens. As a past city employee, I've been in your shoes, so to speak, and witnessed quite a few city council changes over my 30 years. I know from this experience that there's always some apprehension as the leadership transitions and change occurs. The city has a lot of good people doing a lot of good things, and it's important for the city council to continue to support those efforts. You have my commitment to do just that. When I left city service in November of 2009, I never envisioned running for the city council. I figured after 30 years of service and attending over 330 city council meetings, workshops, and special meetings, not as many as John, not yet anyway, I was going to put that chapter of my life away. Over the years, several of my friends and former colleagues encouraged me to consider running, and some were quite persistent, but I held off choosing to focus on raising my three sons and embarking on a new career in the private sector. About a year ago, I felt that the city could possibly use some of the knowledge I gained over the years working there, plus what I had learned and experienced in my position in the private sector. With that in mind, plus my sons off to college in their own careers, I chose to enter the race. Boy, was I in for a surprise. The very same friends and colleagues who had encouraged me now, who had encouraged me, now called me crazy. And of course, I chose to enter the race, which I believe had the highest number of qualified candidates in the city's history. Well, I now have this wonderful opportunity to once again serve the city that I've loved most, if not all, of my life. most, if not all of my life. My goals for the future of our city are really simple. Provide the best possible services we can to the citizens. Businesses and guests of Yuba City, listen to and respect the opinions, pro or con, of the citizens that we serve. Create the best possible business climate we can for existing and new business, and work cooperatively with our neighbors, our regional neighbors. There are lots of significant opportunities and challenges ahead for Yuba City. I'm looking forward to dealing with these with my fellow city council members, the city staff, and the citizens we serve. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Council Member Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say this is an incredible view from the DIAS up here. I'd love to have every one of you this full at every council meeting, because I'm usually seeing it from there, but this is a beautiful view, and I'm very honored to be up here tonight. With that, I could simply just, Mark, I could say ditto. You nailed it. You hit a home run. I'd like to continue now and really just step in with a few thoughts of my own, and it's first that it is with great humility that I really step into this role and accept the position of serving and representing the people in Yuba City. First and foremost, I would like to thank my wife, Susan, and my family. My three daughters are here, Shelby, Shelby, and Mackenzie, there is two Shelby's, for their never-ending support, especially during the last year, because it was a family decision to do this, much like Mark said. You don't go into this idly, you don't go into it without giving it a lot of deep thought. So, thank you to my family. I could not have done this without you. And secondly, I would like to thank all the supporters and voters of Yuba City for the trust and confidence that each of you have placed in me. Spending time with each of you has been the most rewarding part of this past year. I've had stories of spending time with the youngest of voters, who I think were somewhere between three and seven, telling me they were gonna vote for me. And it was, it was the greatest experience. I will have to share some time. But then also spending time with veterans as I walked the streets and got to hear stories from World War II, Vietnam, Korea, and we have some amazing people here. That was truly the most rewarding part. You have inspired me more than any of you will ever know during this past year. Tonight, I do want to say thank you for the service of the prior council members and mayors, and I want to wish you all the very best moving forward with the next phases of your life. You've served the city well. During the campaign, we were able to knock on door after door in our great city, not only ask for support, but more importantly, to find out about the concerns and ideas for our city. Overwhelmingly, the issues of our unfunded pension liability, public safety, infrastructure, transparency, and accountability resounded with the residents of Yuba City. On number six, the voters of Yuba City entrusted three new council members that are before you now. This is a charge that none of us take lightly at all. First and foremost, this council is here to serve you, and individually, we are only one of five, but together, this five can shape the future. We must come together and listen to you as residents of Yuba City to help us make decisions that will make our future bright and prosperous. I would ask every resident of Yuba City to always provide your thoughts and feedback to us. What I can assure you today is that your council will have an open ear to listen to you, and you will be treated with the utmost respect as we work together to solve the issues before this city. In light of the passing of our forty-first president this week, I'd like to share a couple of thoughts. I had the honor, the honor of meeting Forty-One twice. The second time was when I was in the U.S. Air Force during the holidays, when he was visiting the troops, but it was the first time that was really the most impactful in my life that I will never forget. It's when I was in Washington, D.C. as a teenager. I happened to be in the right place at the wrong time, back in the days where there wasn't as much security around the Capitol as there is today. In that wrong place at the right time, several black vehicles pulled up, and out of what seemed from nowhere appeared the Vice President. In short, the Vice President took in mere thirty seconds to say hello, but it left an impression that lasts a lifetime. What you have heard over the past several days about him is examples of just exactly what kind of leader Forty-One was. He would always do what was best for others first. He would always treat everyone with the same level of respect without reference of position or title. In short, he was a leader you could model yourself leadership style on him based upon his servitude and his, and his respect to others. Tonight is a night for ceremony and celebration, as tomorrow the work begins. I'm looking forward to working together with our new mayor, vice mayor, and fellow council members for the next four years to make Yuba City even better than it is. It should never matter which one of us brings forth an idea or whose name is attached to a successful endeavor. It should only matter that when our time in office is done, we have left our city in better condition than it was when we took office, and we treated our residents with the respect and attention they deserve. I would charge my fellow council members tonight to join me in stepping up to the example left by Forty-One in serving others. Thank you again for your trust and confidence, and now let's get together and work to make this city even better than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Very well said. Grace, you're up.
I guess I'm ready, huh? How do you top that from two other fellow councilmen with such high caliber and talent? Nice job, guys. Good evening. I am honored by the voters and the community who believed in our message and our vision and enough to say, we did it. We got here, and I thank you so much for that. I am here hopefully in hopes of not breaking into tears because these tears would be of joy and such deep gratitude about beginning the next journey to serve you and our community and be on the Yuba City Council. As many of you know hopefully by now, the vision that we began this journey, we started with, we serve together. And why is that? Because that is the heart of my beliefs, and that is the philosophy I believe in. I'd like to begin by thanking our team, Grace, hashtag. Members, we had over fifty-plus members, all volunteers. I am so in gratitude to you. You gave your time, your energy, your strength, your talents, your courage, and we developed friendships, and we became a strong team. I will cherish your commitment and not forget. Our work and vision will continue. I hope to count on you as we go on forward. I am committed to do what's right for our community and city. I love the opportunity to work with Vice Mayor Harris, soon mayor, Councilman Cardoza, soon vice mayor, Councilman Boomgarden, and Councilman Shaw, and the city staff and community. I have faith in us that we will always have the best interest and bring forth the best of our city for the good of our people and country. I look forward to working with each of you with respect, integrity, thoughtfulness, and a lot of action. I heard from thousands of community members in the last six months, as both of you've all shared, and I thank you for your time and every knock and talk that we had. I want to continue our conversations and develop those conversations into action. I have great hope that our community members will be much more engaged along with my new role and with this new city council. Lastly, to my family, we could fill up this place three or four times. Luckily, I only had ten tickets. My family members are my anchor. I thank you always from the bottom of my heart. My mother, who has battled breast cancer and has survived. My Tia Teresa, my godmother, battled cancer and also survived. My sister, who is my cousin, battled cancer and also survived. So, we have three survivors here in this room. My mother taught me to be resilient and courageous as she is. She taught me to be a strong woman of faith, truth, and respect. I'm gonna speak Spanish now, so hopefully you can keep up. Darren, are you ready? So, gracias, mamá. Gracias, Tia Teresa. She's raised her head. Las quiero muchísimo. Gracias, nuestra comunidad. Estoy muy agradecida por esta oportunidad, y tomo esta posición con una gran orgullo, con bendiciones de Dios, y si se puede. Yes, we can, and yes, we did. And I like to end it with a quote that resonates on the journey upon us. "I am an ordinary person who has been blessed with extraordinary opportunities and experiences. Today is one of those experiences." Supreme Court Judge Sonia Sotomayor. I thank you, and I am grateful, and I'm here to serve you. Thank you.
Another very well said. Thank you very much, Grace. Welcome. It's gonna be a good ride. Moving on in the agenda, we have an issue of now we are mayorless. Imagine that. Need to do something about that from our new council. We, I will be more than happy to entertain a motion.
To the Vice Mayor. Good day.
You're the Vice Mayor still.
To the Vice Mayor.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's an honor. I would like to recommend Vice Mayor Sean Harris for the title of Mayor for 2018, 2019.
Do I have a second?
We have a second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, first and second, that we elect or we nominate myself for mayor. All those in favor, signal a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we carry. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. All right, we have the mayor taken care of. Now we have a option on the floor to nominate a vice mayor. Do I have any action?
Mr. Mayor.
I know it might be hard.
I move that we nominate Councilman Manny Cardoza to be our new Vice Mayor.
Very good. Do I have a second?
And I second it.
Very well. We have all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
That jacket, I can't refrain from asking. No good deal on a mobile home or something. I don't know. But may we please have the privilege of some comments from our new Vice Mayor?
You bet, yeah. The slight pause got me there for a minute. It's been a long night, so I'm gonna make this short because this honors Sean's tonight, so I'm gonna make this short. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Buckland and Mr. Cleveland for their many years of service to the city of Yuba City. I've learned from both of your experiences and appreciate all that you've taught me. Ms. Diball, your leadership for the past year could be committed, and thank to all three of you. To the new council members, welcome Mark, Dave, and Grace, sorry, for the leadership and talents that it all bring to the table, and I see great things in the year ahead. Last but not least, I want to thank the residents of Yuba City for their votes two years ago that elected me to this position and at the council this evening for electing me as Vice Mayor. And with the passing of our forty-first president this past week, we're all reminded that we're all servants of our community, and I am humble that you have put me, your faith into me, to do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Yes, it is. All right, we're almost over, you guys. Thanks for hanging in there, Horace. Just a couple of thoughts. You know, a lot of it is gonna be the same theme, you'll notice, from folks who preceded me, and I'm really happy to hear some of that because it just solidifies even more in my mind and my heart that we are gonna have a good run together. I have to start by thank yous. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. And our former council members, John Buckland, Stan Cleveland, and of course, Mayor Preet Diball, thank you so much for your service and all the good things you did for our city. And on a personal level, you're, whether intentionally or otherwise, you were an inspiration to me, and I appreciate and will always be grateful. Preet especially, way back when, when I was the commander of the Highway Patrol here, by virtue of that position, you have to get political. And so, Preet and I had occasion to meet several times, and she, she goes, you know what? You need to run for city council. What did I say, of course? Hell, no. Right? Ain't gonna happen. I'm busy enough as it is. But after a while and a while, and she wore it and wore it and wore it, and other people kinda mentioned the idea, it might be a good one, I did it, and I thank you for that. Despite, I think there's so many people to thank for being in this position, any one of these five chairs, but I would not have had the opportunity and the opportunity to have the support of so many other people if it were not for you, Preet, and I thank you very much for that. Thank you very much. You too. Already congratulate our new council members once again. Thank you very much, and congratulations. You guys are gonna have a great time. My family, I cannot, I want to thank them right here in the front row. My brother traveled all the way, he hightailed at three o'clock from San Francisco traffic to get here in time for Grace's speech, and he made it. That was a joke. Come on now. You gotta get my humor. Carrie, I know you do. Carrie and Dee Dee do. But of course, my mom, thank you for being here. I guess Pete must have given up his seat to Shane, wherever Pete may be. My dad's in the back room there, being grumpy as always, but that's okay. Grandma, ninety-two years old. How old are you? She's gonna say something. Eighty-nine years old. Okay, well, Grandma, thank you for being here. Somebody call me tonight later, make sure I answer the phone, all right? Oh, man. All right. Christopher Murphy, our letter pledge of allegiance, my, I don't like to use the word foster, but that's the fact of life. He's my foster son. As of last June, doing a heck of a job, keeping him in school and learning a lot together. I think I probably learned as much from you as you do me, my son, so thank you for being here. I'm proud of you. Bethany, she's here. Charlie, my granddaughter Charlie is at home with Bethany's husband, so, but thank you for being here. Brandon, picked him up at the airport today, flew in from Texas, all the way from DIAS Air Force Base in Abilene. So, son, I'm happy to have you here. Thank you for being here. And good old Blake, my budding artist, he's gonna, probably gonna put an entry in for that water tower we spoke of. We'll see, at least throw his name in the hat, and he has a show coming up at Yuba Sutter Arts in December. And I, these are my reading glasses, so I know my brother-in-law Vance is back there, came in from the Bay Area, my sister Nicole, my nephew Ethan. So, they're all here, and thank you very much for being here. Now, I look out here at the crowd. I know more, more of you than I don't know, and I could go name by name, we could be here all night long thanking folks, right? But I definitely want to mention two faces that I've seen, Bob Barkhouse, former mayor, former mayor, thank you and much respect. We sit up here on strong shoulders, and thank you for everything you folks have done. If there's another mayor in here, please forgive me. I also want to mention, we have, who's here?
Sandy Hilliard.
Sandy Hilliard. Forgive me, Sandy. Forgive me very much. Recognize you as well. I do know, I don't know if he is still here, but our new sheriff, Brandon Barnes. Brandon, are you back there? There you are, he's waving at you, just like every cop, you guys have it back to the wall. You gotta love that. And Jim, Jim Whitaker, thank you for coming very much from Sutter County Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much. Our new city attorney, already been mentioned, but Shannon, welcome. Thank you for being here as well. And you know, a lot of this, this stuff here is not always here, and the flowers and whatnot, but the schedule and everything to get all of us in line takes a strong staff. So, I definitely want to thank all the city staff for the work you folks put behind the scene. You never ask for anything in return, but you do one heck of a job, and I really appreciate it. Even the exec staff under the leadership of Mr. Steve Crager over here, they, most of them are, in order to allow the public to have more seating, they're watching us on the TV from the Sutter Room. And so, if you guys are watching, whatever camera it may be, thank you very much for all of your help. I know, I'm gonna go down the line here, I can't help it. Arnaldo, who's no longer here, who's now being filled in his position with Darren, the hard work he does to keep everything moving, all of our permitting processes and and just the building procedures folks have to go through and navigate through. Diana Langley, Public Works Director, I can go on all day about how awesome she is. Robin, Finance Director, and we talked about it before, and it's gonna be an issue and always will be for a while, is maintaining and managing our unfunded liability. That's the elephant in the room, that's something we cannot ignore, and I guarantee that will be a top priority for us to figure out a way to get through that crisis. Nellie Springer, Personnel Director, she makes sure we hire and maintain quality personnel for our city, and she's done one heck of a job. Brad McIntyre, Parks and Recreation, he's the guy who, when you go out there and you do the skate park, or you play bocce ball, or have a program at the Gap, or anything like that, he even has the Animal Services Authority under him, does one great job. So Brad, I thank you for that. Police Chief Rob Landon will be here. You've helped me both personally and professionally over the last couple of years, and I definitely appreciate that, Rob. You do one great job. Your staff is awesome. So many times I hear how fast your folks respond, and they just have a way of being Johnny on the spot, one heck of a job. Thank you very much. And then Pete Daley, our Fire Chief, there he is on the other side. See, these guys with the uniforms, they get to come in, they don't have to sit in the backside. That's okay. Thank you very much for everything you've done, Pete. And as Preet mentioned, our commission members, all the commissions we have, those folks are kind of the unsung heroes. People, some folks don't even know that we have commissions, unfortunately, but I tell you what, they, they work hard, they're dedicated, and I am looking forward to, as your mayor, to working with them even closer than we have been in the past, maintaining that momentum to get their input, get their feedback, and appreciate the value they bring to the table for our city. We are here to support all of you. You put us here, and now it's our turn to step up and do the right thing for the right reasons, and I guarantee we're gonna do our best to do that. As I assume this role as your mayor, public safety does remain our number-one priority. How could it not be? Right? I think that's a given. Every campaign, somebody running for office will say that, but even though it is true and will always be, I'm gonna take things just a little bit step further because, you know, our roads and our infrastructure, people, when we talk to folks, that's a big deal. And we need to focus on getting, figure out a way to maybe funnel perhaps a little bit more money into that area as best we can, figure out creative ways to finance that, prioritize the projects, and see results. You okay, Tej? I already mentioned the unfunded liability, a high priority. Now, as mayor, they ask you to come up with goals and priorities for myself, right? We will come up with goals and priorities as council, we do every year. I don't see them changing too much, but for me personally, I've already mentioned the fact that public safety is number-one, unfunded liability first and foremost up there as a priority, as is our infrastructure. But I want to work hard at addressing our homeless issue. I know that there may be varying opinions to the extent of the city's involvement or whatnot. I'm not gonna worry about that. I know it's not just, the homeless problem doesn't stop or begin at the city limits, right? And so we want to make sure that we harness that, that energy, all the folks and the knowledge that people have to address that problem, get creative, work together with our friends in the county or whomever else across the river, whatever it takes to come together collectively and address the issue. I kinda have a deal with homeless people, it's become politically correct, in my opinion, cower to those folks. I don't believe in that. I don't mind saying it publicly, I just did. However, if you're homeless by no fault of your own, or even if it is a fault of your own and you want help, we're here to give it. If you're homeless and you don't want help, we're here to hold you accountable because even though we, we support you, you are a human being and it's not a crime to be homeless, but you know what? It's a, it is a crime to victimize our neighborhoods. It is a crime to use our city as your personal toilet. I'm not gonna tolerate that, best I can as a person, okay? We'll help them, but we're gonna help them help themselves. All right? Economic development and prosperity, always a theme. In fact, we have folks who, that's their job, is to work on economic development. I am a fan of smart growth. We want to have growth slow and steady, but we do, if you're like me, you do appreciate our small-town atmosphere. However, we, we want maybe some big city amenities to go with that, but I appreciate the fact, and I've told many people this, excuse me, that here in Yuba City, small-town stuff, right? You can go to the post office and you can park within fifteen feet of the front door of the post office. The guy working behind the counter knows your name, and guess what? You're not paying to park here. Right? We like that, we want to keep that. But there's other things that maybe we can work on improving to bring us up and contemporize our infrastructure and whatnot. Our developers, I want to make sure our impact fees are both reasonable and defensible, not only what they are, but why they are. Why are, why are they this price? Can we do something creative or innovative to work with folks to encourage development in our city, smart development? God, I keep taking my glasses on and off, I can't read. Tourism. We have the new, the Lodging Association. I think that's an untapped, thus far untapped resource to focus some effort to bring the awareness of our city to the, to the public, the state, in fact, the world. I recently traveled over to Europe, and in doing so, I hit YouTube a lot, and they do, folks do videos on YouTube, just simple thing with a GoPro, marketing their city. I think if we got creative, it didn't cost us anything to let people know the unique aspects of our town and our community, to spread the word, the good word, that is our wonderful city. And even if they don't move here, even if they don't locate their business here, they might come enjoy a day or two and maybe buy some gas and a sandwich, you know, see what happens. So that's gonna be something else. I also want to work with, refresh and renew our partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Business Association, the aforementioned Lodging Association, and Visit Yuba Sutter, among, that's just a few of them. If we can go ahead and work together, start these meetings going, and work toward a collective effort towards moving us forward for the betterment of our city, I'm all about that. So that's gonna be one of my focuses as well, one of ours, I hope. Quality of life issues, the things that make us unique, bring that forward. I'm on the board for Yuba Sutter Arts. That brings, I think, art in whatever form, whether it be theater or music, or painting the utility boxes, or anything like that. It makes us unique, brings some unique aspects, especially if it comes from folks who live here, and it sets us apart from other folks. It's not, we're not gonna be some cookie cutter Roseville if I have my way. We want something unique, set us apart, something we can have pride in. Let's see, recreational opportunities, volunteerism, I go ahead, I've been working with Brad McIntyre and a young lady who works for Sutter County Superintendent of Schools named Grace Escondola, sitting here now with, next to me, on a mentorship program for our young people. There's more to follow on that, we still have to hammer out those details, but we're looking forward to getting that off the ground as well. I want to maintain open communication, not only with and between us and staff, but with us and the public. You folks elected us, I want to hear from you, and I really, really mean that. Respectful conversation goes both ways, and I'm looking forward to talking with even more of you as time moves forward. Also going to have a, a friend of mine came up with the idea, the name, Moments with the Mayor. It's kinda piggybacking on the idea of when I used to do coffee with a cop when I was commander of the CHP over here. And monthly meetings in whatever nature, whether it be me coming to you, you coming to us, or different venues and whatnot, conversation to open the dialogue for respectful and down-to-earth conversation, not confrontation, but conversation even if we disagree about various issues that is on your mind. And I'm gonna offer staff an opportunity to be present for at least part of that time, it'd be an hour or so, to explain certain issues, maybe it be the budget, maybe it will be the unfunded liability, maybe we're looking for some new police equipment or fire equipment, and we can just share information and provide a platform for dialogue back and forth between us and city staff and you folks. Looking forward to working that out. One thing has also been mentioned before is that we will listen to you with an open mind, will always be shown respect, the way of professional poise and decorum that is worthy of my charge as your mayor and indeed our charge as your city council, always, no matter what. For the Dias is no place for ego and pride. Your ego belongs out there. We don't take things personal here. Okay, wait a minute. Wait a minute. I'm supposed, you're supposed to do this when you talk to people, you're supposed to look both directions. I didn't mean to stop it, Grace.
Ego has left the door.
That's good. Simply because ego and pride and all these things, when people start getting hurt personally or feel attacked personally, you want to bow your chest. That's normal. Everybody has that. But I tell you what, that, that might cloud judgment and it blunts the instruments of our success. How can you develop a true relationship, be flexible, your ability to learn and evolve as a team if you're gonna stonewall somebody because they make you angry from the first sentence? I don't believe in that. Ego belongs out there, let's don't take things personal and be pragmatic approach to everything as we move forward. It's also my expectation that city staff, particularly department heads, that they always promote Yuba City. Take every opportunity to tout the good aspects of our town, and that leadership on your part will hopefully trickle down to your staff and set the example so we will always know, it's part of our goals and priorities to enhance our reputation. I think every opportunity you don't take is a missed opportunity to increase the awareness of our beautiful town, and I'd like to appreciate that if they move on. We're always looking forward for the next best way, something I used to say to my staff, cops especially, they don't like change, right? So I'd use the analogy, you know, what if Ford, oh, this is good enough, we're gonna stop at the Model T, right? Don't want change, but things constantly evolve. You always look for the next best way. Don't assume that your idea is the best one, that's where it stops. That's the mindset moving forward that I, well, I've always embraced myself. So hopefully we can carry that on. And today, of course, is a happy day. We'll work hard, we'll maintain, in some cases, gain trust and support, and you will be respected even though we differ, and we will. It won't be a constant agreement because after all, we all want the same thing, right? We all want a good quality of life, we want to be in a safe place when we go to and from work and school and at home, and we want to enjoy our small-town atmosphere and each other, hopefully, despite our differences, respectfully differences. So thank you all for coming today, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve here. I humbly accept, if that's the word, and I, that is gonna be the theme word, is humility. Don't know everything, but I'm really, really willing to try to help you out. Look forward to meeting with you. And I'm gonna close right now, but I'm gonna do so in the name of Don Covey, Chuck Messick, and Number Forty-One, Trevor Walker Bush. So thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate it.
All right. All we gotta do, bang, and dabble. Meetings adjourned, meetings adjourned.